Ay yo, what's good? This is DJ Kid Magic Rock, and you're listening to The Magic Hour, where you hear Columbus, Ohio's talent first. Way before they put it on the streets, way before it's available for downloading, you can hear it on this show. So I want everyone to check out the show. The show's gonna be real dope, nothing but raw, uncut talent. Check it out. And before I get on with the show, I wanna do it a little different. I wanna dedicate this whole show to my man Rue. He passed away. He was the one that jumped in the creek to try to save the baby, and he ended up drowning. So this track right here, this is "Tyrant", and this is Rue. Once again, shout-outs to you. I know you're looking down at us. We gonna keep it going, keep the music going for you. Check it out, y'all. This is called "I Get It".
Tunnel vision money's all I see. Dream chasing money's all I need. I get it. I get it. I get it. Boy, I get it. I get it. I get it. I get it. Tunnel vision money's all I see. Dream chasing money's all I need. I get it. I get it. I get it. Boy, I get it. I get it. I get it. I get it. Tunnel vision money's all I see. Dream chasing money's all I need. I get it. I get it. I get it. Boy, I get it. I get it. I get it. I get it. Tunnel vision money's all I see. Dream chasing money's all I need. I get it. I get it. I get it. Boy, I get it. I get it. I get it. I get it.
Shit don't stop, same shit every day. Crime free, grind hard like there's no tomorrow. Live your life, spend some money, homie, have some fun. Never know when you gotta go on the run. It's that H1M1 swine flu. Liam Bonner coming through like a Billy Coop. When you getting money, gotta keep a bit too. Still in the hood, homie, how bout you? Still in the trap house, doing what it do. Homies coming home, niggas still doing time. Niggas catching cases, packing pistols, same crime. Young guy eat a hustler, still on the grind. Still in the hood, still on the grind. Never gonna change, still get mine. Homies coming home, niggas still doing time. Niggas catching cases, packing pistols, same crime. Pill, ain't taking no taser. Gotta get to jail. I'm so stuck in my ways, been in the trap for days. Like I'm in the trap days, where niggas shit the trap pay. Trying to duck the trap raid, 'cause they'll be coming any day now. And all I know is ballin' like Chris Paul up in the playground. Niggas know I stayed up on my section like the push-up position. It's a order for the soldiers. Swear to God that we missing.
I'm on the grind, I get my cheese up. I smoke my weed, I kick my feet up. I'm feeling good, yeah, I'm feeling good. Puffing on a swisher, home fucker backwards. I'm in the hood, I'm in the Chevrolet. Your bitch up on my dick, she like, "Fang, damn it, pain". Getting high, motherfucker. Stacking up my cheese, I'm getting by, motherfucker. Addict, gun gunna man. Fuck them other side, next to stun this man. I keep it coming, man, like a running pack. Deion Sanders, I bring the corners back. I'm riding dog, I'm shining dog. Like tip, I'm riding with the China dog. Born George Bush, them haters look. Yeah, I'm with them hustlers, yeah, I'm with them krips.
Yeah, 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 this Main Street boy. Listening to Kid Magic in the Magic Hour, boy. What's happening?
I know you see me, going in for the money. I go, go get it, they love how I shine. Going hard for the cash, don't worry about me. I'll be home in time. I ain't worried about it, ain't know what they say. I'm getting there, I'm driving in the fast lane, trying to get back. I ain't slowing down, unless I'm making it.
Choke till they smoke me, see it in my eyes. Gotta get the groceries, my nigga got them pies. You know I got the go seat. Took somebody to the sky, probably why they so cheap. Boy, it's all about survival. Ricks move more than bibles. In Ohio, product of my circumstance. Round the way with my mans, talking grants, baking pans, weighing grams, going ham. On my way back from the D, MGM, 'cause last night was sweet. All in on black while I'm drinking for free with all my niggas with me.
I know you see me, going in for the money. I go, go get it, they love how I shine. Going hard for the cash, don't worry about me. I'll be home in time. I ain't worried about it, ain't know what they say. I'm getting there, I'm driving in the fast lane, trying to get back. I ain't slowing down, unless I'm making it.
Cooler than the fan, qualify me in the polo tee. Jtone hat, low tattoo showing. Everybody knows me, product of the street. Northside beach, beat niggas still trying to live. A nigga still trying to eat. Really fucked up, though I don't say it on the beat. That's why I listen to the words that the OG speak. They tell me, "Get out on the grind, boy, and go and get paid." Don't be wasting time out here trying to get laid. I've been around too long, it's time I'm trying to get paid. Know they love it when they hear my name. They love my city, they heard of my gang. They know what I do. If God don't find me in the midst of action, I'm ducked off with some Latin, drunk and discussing packages somewhere out in the head.
Can't explain how I feel inside. So much is going through my mind. Trying to make them wrong try. Question myself like, "Why, oh, why?" Can't explain why I feel this pain. Told to live with the decisions I made. Praying to God that I'm making through the change.
Putting twenty dollars in the collection, play for a speck of favor. Ten percent of my revenue end up being lost wages. Had me in them lost places, stuck in raw phases. Repairing my drive till I just paid a Caucasian. Preparing my eyes to see what I ain't wanna see. Declaring my pride, staring survival nights. I couldn't even eat, nigga, I barely survived. But I had them killers with me, ready to ride. You don't hear me, though. Let me teach these niggas something that we really know. Rattus straps, tail bro, hit them high and hit them low. They know I don't play no games, so anytime that beef came, my enemies would fear me, 'cause I get in the killer mode. I thank God for good and bad shit, blame the devil. If I wasn't living from my past, then I'd probably let go. Because the present ain't a gift like Christmas. I kill the future from my past and pray to God for forgiveness. I'm still dreaming. State of emergency, murder in the third degree. My suicidal thoughts open up the surgery with no reliable cure to my sickness. Deaths through the numbers, I'll become another statistic. Renting is deprived on, relenting is denied on. Most think they seen it all, they can't 'cause their eyes gone. What happens when you live your life with eyes closed? No sense of direction for deprived souls. I'm stuck living to fail, and I'm at war, rapping blind, so niggas just feel me in brail. I feel worthless, so I sit and close the curtains. Dark thoughts occurring from my past to my current. I see myself playing with my son, then in my nightmare shows me telling them in the casket, I killed them on purpose. And since me and this mother is the place, I give her my sperm every day to replace my mistake. I'm still dreaming.
Yo, what's happening, Columbus? Six one four finest, you know what I'm saying? Northside OG. I'm in the Magic Hour with DJ Kid Magic. My nigga shots out, boom, boom. Fetty Boys in the building. First off, let me, you know what I'm saying, introduce my niggas that's with me. You know what I'm saying, tell these niggas who the fuck you is, nigga.
Yo, what's happening? What's happening? It's Sleep Low. Certified G, nah, I mean, holding it down Fetty Gang. You know what it is, Northside, Zone One.
True, true.
What it is, six one four and the O H and the Diamonds. Your boy C Bo Man, Loco Man, going hard in the bank.
For sure, you feel me? You know what I mean? We just in here vibing today with the homie, you know what I'm saying? I put the motherfucking prescription out first, you know what I'm saying? It was just some fat, old shit, you know what I'm saying? For the city to feel you, boy. But this new shit, the motherfucking prescription too, this is straight current shit, straight new shit. It's vibing, everybody in the city picked this shit up. You know what I'm saying? Support your boy, 'cause I'm a straight Columbus bred motherfucker, straight nigga, no bullshit, no water, no adjective, nigga. Check me out, nigga. My real name, nigga, you know what I'm saying? I hid it with you in the album, so you can then Google me and see who the fuck I really am. You know what I'm saying? Straight up. This one right here for all them bad girls. I call them bitch perfect. Bitch perfect, perfect bitches are purpose for bitches. Already got the room, all this magic decision. I know your feeling, it's a slide to your position. I'm trying to take care of that ass, need your permission. Bitch perfect, bitch perfect. She so fucking fine. Bitch perfect, bitch perfect. Bitch perfect, she so fucking bad. Bitch perfect. True, been told, never been the one to brag. Yeah, my chick, yellow thing, she hella bag. Took a shopping, bought a Louis and a Fendi bag. Blue couture strap dress for the fat ass. Lover ass, the deaf and baby feel the same. Me and Shudder been the items since back in the day. Been through the bullshit, yet we weathered it. Couldn't see a nigga fucking, so I married. Down for a daddy, man, against you send the sheets. But my business won't say nothing, homie, 'cause she know the street. Yeah, I got a good one, if he got a boss, bitch. Disrespect, pop off, nigga, come at my ass slick. Like stripper, I'ma put this pause on your wreck shit. Hit the trunk, make you call them laws on me. Both shooters with the roofers long necks. Get to your money, ain't an issue, homies on one street. A little chat. Bitch perfect, perfect bitches are purpose for bitches. Already got the room, all this magic decision. I know your feeling, it's a slide to your position. I'm trying to take care of that ass, need your permission. Bitch perfect, bitch perfect. She so fucking fine. Bitch perfect, bitch perfect. Bitch perfect, she so fucking bad. Bitch perfect. Make my bra's touch, showed it, put the beam on ya. Ain't no I and team, me, it's dope, that's all she need. Homie, not for bop. Back in the G when she ain't smoked weed, now she blowin' big pack. Fuck me and count cheese, upper Escher large chick. So I let her have my C-bag, yellow bra. Future said, "Yeah, she can see this, she so bad." Took a shop and let her shut the outlet down. New Giuseppe Redbuck, Vera Wayne just like the mop. Jimmy Choo and Gucci boot, Valentino women suits. Independent head strong, help me put my team on. Eric Kane need the queen, my ringtone is a ringtone. When I hear a ringtone, I pick up the phone, rolling like a rolling stone. Bossing like I'm Al Capone. Every time I look into her eyes, I hit her with the bump. Rolling like a rolling stone, bossing like I'm Al Capone. So every time I look into her eyes, I hit her with the bump. Bitch perfect, perfect bitches are purpose for bitches. Already got the room, all this magic decision. I know your feeling, it's a slide to your position. I'm trying to take care of that ass, need your permission. Bitch perfect, bitch perfect. She so fucking fine. Bitch perfect, bitch perfect. Bitch perfect, she so fucking bad. Bitch perfect. Second night at the motherfucking Renaissance. Told you I be footin' mobiles through Christian LaBuck. That's my boot, so she get just what she want. Three micro cords, bags in the motherfucking mug. Small change to a boat, know she love the stuff. She so fly, running through a chip. Where I seen her fucking eyes light up. Body of a goddess, mind of a college grad. That's the best of both worlds, good brains and a fat ass. Love to see her smack, so I feel it's worth the watch. Ever since I been fucking with Shudder, all I seen my money pile, check. Bitch perfect, perfect bitches are purpose for bitches. Last night she put it on me, that perfect position. On the couch, on the floor, all the way to the fucking kitchen. Let me put a spanking on that ass, 'cause she gave me permission. Check the guilt, and I swear, you'll see me, I'm glitching a thousand dollar pair of kicks, bitch. You'll see me, I'm getting it on. Bitch perfect, perfect bitches are purpose for bitches. Already got the room, all this magic decision. I know your feeling, it's a slide to your position. I'm trying to take care of that ass, need your permission. Bitch perfect, bitch perfect. She so fucking fine. Bitch perfect, bitch perfect. Bitch perfect, she so fucking bad. Bitch perfect. Yeah. How the fuck was y'all niggas baked? Ain't no C in the B. Yeah. Talk for my CO niggas. Huh. I see you, cuz. It's how we do, nigga. Kid Magic. If they want it, I'ma give it to them. Put the semi to them and let it rip. This Capital City shit comes equipped with crack rocks, weed sacks and two clips. And a gang of niggas banging hard, so don't trip. You ever heard the sound of blood when it drop drip? You skating on thin ice, nigga, don't slip. Six one phone yelling out, spit the grizzly. Let it roar infinitely, a bust it till it's empty. And then reel it up, 'cause it's nothing but a G thing to circle back and lead the hood toe up. I need a snack, and these niggas are cold cuts. You smoking on them woodchucks, I'm like, throw up. You golfing hard off that bunk, pop the throw up. Can you hit mine now, nigga, hold up? Rollin' I Dolo, fried with the heater tucked. If a nigga ain't strapped, I prefer to beat him up. Let the hands eat him up. Elbows and knees, two bitch niggas are see-through. A bitch nigga, I see you. Guess who it is peeking through your window? Six, six, one, one, four. Now you know, where them boys on the corner strapped up, move and blow. Six, six, one, one, four. Now you know, where them big booty girls rock down and get low. Six, six, one, one, four. Now you know, it's dark down here from behind your slits you throw. Six, six, one, one, four. Now you know. Now you can find me in Jeff's place, tipping that bottle up. Come on, sit with me, nigga, go swallow up. Shot for shot, you drink, and I'ma follow up. Let's get drunk, belligerent, tear the club up. No need to worry, cuz, I'm packing the stuff. After we shoot it out, man, we snagging some grub. 'Cause I'm fucked up, feeling the herb and the liquor, and I need a life of this joint. Excuse me, mister, can I get a flame? Spare coat or phone and need it? And in return, I'll show you where the weed be. What you need, man, is Capital City. What you want? Hard soft blow on fifty. Holler at your homie, if you want it, I get it. You wanna get high, hit a swish, your mommy split it. Shake it, girl, get it. But before you do that, pass me my weed back. CO with my G's at. Guess who it is peeking through your window? Six, six, one, one, four. Now you know, where them boys on the corner strapped up, move and blow. Six, six, one, one, four. Now you know, where them big booty girls rock down and get low. Six, six, one, one, four. Now you know, it's dark down here from behind your slits you throw. Six, six, one, one, four. Now you know. Guess who it is peeking through your window? Six, six, one, one, four. Now you know, where them boys on the corner strapped up, move and blow. Six, six, one, one, four. Now you know, where them big booty girls rock down and get low. Six, six, one, one, four. Now you know, it's dark down here from behind your slits you throw. Six, six, one, one, four. Now you know. Now you know, nigga. Coast gangsta, BO nigga, Northside. Combined with Henny bars, nigga, we from the Coast Clip. Fuck you up, nigga. Niggas don't feel that, though. Holler at your boy, Northside, nigga. I'm in Jeff's place, getting cracked, nigga. I'm strapped up, nigga. I got my L's back, so now the popo can search my whip. North, north. R.I.P. my nigga Elbow. Ay, 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 ay. I got the team, long as they got me. Fuck TV, baby, you can watch me. Feeling cocky like Rocky, boy, who could top me? I'm taking off top speed, who can stop me? Worked too hard, boy, so I gotta make it. Opportunity in my face, who wouldn't take it? You might just look at it like he got a deal, but it's my time to show the world how I feel, and that's real. Surprise, I survived, gotta rise, so I strive. Analyze, realize, this game meets Hannah's. Some rappers need minimize. I'm here to identify the ones that ain't penalized. On your side like nationwide, but I ain't giving out insurance. I'm just giving fans assurance that I'm here, and I'm straightforward. If you rolling, I'm a floor. This game will never abort it. Too many people supportive, snapping shots like they was tourists. Close your eyes, picture the portrait popping bottles. But we corking, taking off like I was talking. Only speak on what's important. Swag is new like I was joking on New Jersey. Man, this game is kinda curvy, people, you ain't gotta worry. I'ma show you that I'm worthy, 'cause I worked too hard in the rap game neatly. And niggas was my friends, man, they start to act cheesy. But I ain't really tripping, though, 'cause I gotta do it for my kids and do it for the way I wanna live. You feel? I got the team, long as they got me. Fuck TV, baby, you can watch me. Feeling cocky like Rocky, boy, who could top me? I'm taking off top speed, who can stop me? Worked too hard, boy, so I gotta make it. Opportunity in my face, who wouldn't take it? You might just look at it like he got a deal, but it's my time to show the world how I feel, and that's real. I'm unstoppable, I read the future like the prophet do. Spitting and shitting on different shit, you know that Pac would do. Ironically, timing me ain't in the question. It's fine with me reservations for my destinations. I made it finally, bout my green like the guy Code Do. Standing tall, shining bright like the light posts do. Hit the game, niggas change, wanna I owe you. Many slams, it's a shame I do not know you, dude. Pants wagon, money sagging, flagging, red ragging. Whole money swag smashing, got ass, yeah. Miss Martin is a Ashton. Something wrong with y'all, niggas, y'all must be fasting. Something happened to the game, no questions for asking. Better hope the cops catch you, or I gotta blast him. Benacoot crash him, maybe a devil ties him. I don't know what I'ma do, but dog, I'ma mash him. I got the team, long as they got me. Fuck TV, baby, you can watch me. Feeling cocky like Rocky, boy, who could top me? I'm taking off top speed, who can stop me? Worked too hard, boy, so I gotta make it. Opportunity in my face, who wouldn't take it? You might just look at it like he got a deal, but it's my time to show the world how I feel, and that's real. I'm pouring nuts like a testicle, but some people get skeptical. I stand behind my words and back it up, just like the echo do. The way I'm spitting is tremendous. Word pass made at the class, while your trash gets suspended. Miss my hands, I'ma wind it. Man, you shouldn't be offended. Now you mad you can't attend this? Man, just forget your attendance. You been sleeping for a minute. I got loose, and now I'm in it, 'cause my name ain't Bennett. Hood nigga, I Bennett. Catch me popping on apartments, why you trying to find some tendence? I been shipping friends off. Why you trying to find a friendship? Shit, it's different where I'm from, so you gotta understand me. In this rap game, it's a shame they understand me. I got the team, long as they got me. Fuck TV, baby, you can watch me. Feeling cocky like Rocky, boy, who could top me? I'm taking off top speed, who can stop me? Worked too hard, boy, so I gotta make it. Opportunity in my face, who wouldn't take it? You might just look at it like he got a deal, but it's my time to show the world how I feel, and that's real. Ay, ay. What's up? LA boy shit. LA boy shit. Shit, nigga. It's hard life, bitch. We back in it
H in the L, bitch
H in the L, bitch
Two-take Charlie
Let's go, let's go
Straight, nigga, to the death of me Tiki official, no whistle, no referee Just two pistols, two niggas that'll pop for me So niggas look crazy, get shot for it Said I'm not on it, we on it hard as fuck It been long enough, been gave starving up Now I got a new target that I aim to bust BV's 106 couch, catch me standing up With my hammer tucked, ain't no telling what I'm on Get crunk, slap the shit up outta soldier boy Get him up, have his little ass crowd surfing But he'll sue a nigga blind, so it ain't worth it Hey, it's D E L I I fling duck right hand on the four-five, who could fuck with him? Got a team full of grimin' niggas that'll fuck with me Lil' man's on the ground with his shell stuck in him His man's duckin' ranch, who should've ducked with him? Okay, I'm back at it again Flow dumb, spit six so much, I'm making my dope numb Who wants some? I place orders for real Sue who, niggas know what I do I kick ass like steel toe boots, and that's real You ain't from around here, you better get your green card Enough green to give, so we don't kill y'all Potato head, having niggas get pilfered off Mouth on the front of the gun, face baked soft Blowing out your bacon bits in your side train Hot sauce leaking, you sleep eternal dream Yo, all y'all need is one mic, Mike D Hard life, no dancing, no dunking, no singing, no throwing hard rights Only if I had some Mac One hood and one trap, one strap, this shit all of my targets I love that hood, yeah, you know I'm reppin' blood Miller boy, six through shit, one clipper make a nigga flip Say my name on your album, it's a problem We don't hit you up with hollows, we probably would just rob Seen a lotta shit, hood rap bitches suck a lotta dick Fort Smith, West V, niggas taking a lotta trips Batman hop out, niggas swallowing a lotta zips Guns everywhere in the ride, nigga, like I was tipping I almost got hit, and then I shot back Shells went through the window and knocked off his socks hat Niggas need me in the hood, I bring the block back Hold up, homie, gimme a second, go ahead and drop that This is my hood, and I'ma rap to the death What you expect, that I change for the fame? Fuck a chick by twenty-second, niggas with me Young Milli load up the semi, and empty every round And these bitches been tryna send me Fuck what a nigga say, we choppin' at him with K's You know them bullets flipping, be cracking them niggas' page Y'all motherfuckers got something to say, then say it now 'Cause we ain't even tryna talk, nigga, we laying them down All y'all need is one mic, one mic, one All y'all need is one mic, one mic, one All y'all need is one mic, one mic, one All y'all need is one mic, one mic, one Yo, all y'all need is one mic, one blunt, one brick and one scale Watch what you say on them berries and next tails Matter of fact, don't even call it all Look back at what the snitches done did Nigga, fuck all of y'all, the homie Ethan, he got thirty-three And so did Pooch, which means, outta three niggas, somebody gonna sing So King, he decided that's something he had to do I couldn't do that to my dudes, I don't know about you If anything, shit, we all got time Fuck that stupid shit, niggas wanna be thugs Don't know how to do this shit, niggas don't care Sitting on burners under their wheelchairs I'm catching cases, I feel the pin in the air I ain't no fuckboy, flying on verses, perfect or rhyming I fight cases, say it in the hood, who with the nines? Man, y'all niggas really silly, too silly, little up a milli And spray that motherfucker, then throw it when it gets empty It's nothing, and I wait from dust to dust I bust and bust till you die, feel it? It's filling out your guts, I'm ready to take this shit to the hood Right now, while y'all quiet now, my nigga, my time is now All y'all need is one mic, one mic, one All y'all need is one mic, one mic, one All y'all need is one mic, one mic, one
Ay, Columbus, that's all y'all need
All y'all need is one mic, one mic, one All y'all need is one mic, hard life Last four, hold it down, life is a struggle, nigga You want more, hold up, I done one, two, and three What should I add more? Damn, I done proved it, what more could y'all ask for? Who you call when your guts and your balls, you in the county? You thinking of some people, the COs around me, nobody is there Feeling like nobody care Hey, but I really can't blame it on nobody up here I'm just sitting in my chair, and sandals and cops laughing I'm dreaming bout fuckin' my bitch, wake up spazzin' For niggas this shit hard Time on the big yard, I'm in my zone like I'm playing Some flick in my fifth car The hood was real in Columbus, every night it was like a Gonna go off the ambulance and be running So now I'm hustlin', serving my flame Niggas throwing dirt on my name You really know I'm getting murked for that shame And I was whining, niggas thought I was finished Should've knew I was the truth, and when I stepped inside that booth Outta prison, so now I'm rhyming Just trying to find a change, it's pace, so let the Haiti vague My space staying low, so I'm just saying, ay Man, I'm the coldest, coldest Columbus gonna ever hear And I'm still getting harder, harder each year This shit is crazy, might have to go back to lay it down So I'm just writing till I the diamond come around, yo All y'all need is one mic, one mic, one All y'all need is one mic, one mic, one All y'all need is one mic, one mic, one All y'all need is one mic, one mic, one Who hotter than us?
Pistol
Who hotter than us?
Smiling
Who hotter than us?
So
Who hotter than us?
K.O.
Who hotter than us?
Trap
Who hotter than us? All sight, don't matter Send a nigga shots like I'm some kind of director Hit my young and hot and decock like I'm some kind of professor It ain't shocking how I read him, mirror him all lethal injection I learned a new way just to kill niggas, not for Smith or Western Play him up, and he be still like who hotter than us? And ain't nobody safe from murder, only ones rocking with us And everybody said who made we only think out over us We pushing, making through the struggles like a man who stopping us We the holders, brew we gone, I don't think nobody hot We more hotter than Fox Say the blow up in your face, you trying to treat us like a lighter Perky matching up like buzz Shut these niggas up like nuzzles, one is lava, then it's truck I piss 'cause you ain't shit to me, I flush and pour my drawers up Don't touch me 'cause you feeling me, I lick at you like enemy Like the teacher, I'm the ruler, smack and I pick your head up My business on the target, kill the beat, now get your candles up I'm bang R.I.P., now it's still in my structure My bitch catch attitudes, I quickly adjust Pockets keep feeling like a custer, I can muster More moves, you can fluster, buster I'm from Livingston, bitch Yeah, I'm problem bound, fuck around, you gonna get bodied on this side of town K.O., he know two, East Main, start of town Gunshot, propellers, and sirens, them familiar sounds I don't gotta keep an eye on my homies, too true Years deep, we done weave through the phonies Bust a tenderoni, downs in the home on a lonely trip shit Ay, baby, only call when we bonin' I'm trap head crazy, been a minute since I rode a bus We the niggas brewing buzz, and y'all rolling dust R.S., fuck with them, and we ready to bust It's all sight, don't matter, and who hotter than us? Who hotter than them trap head niggas? No one, why? 'Cause we all on one, nigga Don't make me have to show you, nigga Pop the trunk, hit the switch, and I scope you, nigga Pop, pop, bang, bang, now I'm foldin', niggas If a nigga need a hug, so then let me show you, niggas Middle of July, bricking snow on you, niggas Got the big four-five, let it go, niggas K.O., keep the pack, pistol with the track Smiling, keep a smile on his face, that's a fact Me, you know I keep the strap, it's my lap If you think about running up, don't do that Because we loaded and we ready to bust Blow your ass away like dust We from Columbus, Ohio, and I rep the bus I know my niggas go hard, who hotter than us? I know my niggas go hard, who hotter than us?
I ain't never been a broke nigga, never been rich I always been a blood, and I ain't never claimed crib Only reason why I promised Kane, 'cause her daddy came quick And niggas talk shit, and I be taking aim quick And that's word to my mother, word to my kids Get my gun small, nigga, bullets real big Man, your bitch trash, and she be on my dick She an Instagram hoe, and she be snapping flicks I'm a trap head nigga, only catching chicks Fifty boys on it, they really take the risk I'm from the side, but we ride with the trade five, where I reside A.T.A.W.O.S.D.M. Anytime, anywhere, all sight, it don't matter to them You get your shit splattered, fucking around with them And R.S. niggas know we fucking with them And Lil' Pa, real pistol, really fucking with him And you'll really feel the pistol if you fucking with him Who hotter than us? A.G.
I got the hood saying I got the trap saying All my enemies saying Somebody help me now I don't make trap music, bitch, I make trap message You feel a certain way, I wonder what the question is Unlyrical, non-analytical, spiritual, non-religious, just wanna be nuts Too many motherfuckers wanna be us I'm a overachiever, you a non-believer If this was football, you would be a non-receiver I'm a dopamine, you a non-retriever School bully beat you up, I bet he just to teach ya People holding they hearts, I put them in a seizure Graduation mixed with eight oh eight The next thing you know, and your ass got draped Rick Ross, the CO, Frank Ocean gay Lies is a snitch, I don't know what to say We still slaves, 'cause we don't own shit Man, I wanna be the master, I want my own shit, man I got the hood saying I got the trap saying All my enemies saying Somebody help me now I'm a hustler, use my hustle hand to get this dope shit Hot nigga, you can call me Mr. Summer Sostis Knowin' to keep a toaster, but I know you don't wanna test that It's four-five rock niggas like babies in that bassinet I'm a male, eighth pet, predator in the Aprils High as hell, environment fluid dipped on my cigarettes Cotton little first class, jumping over continents I bust up in British, it's a deeper state of consciousness Dealing with these idiots, misfits, and misogynist Coke sale, clientele, climbing over mountain cliffs Just to get a hit of grit, I'm working with Peruvian Cris, I got about two of them, I'm east side moving High-rise apartments, polar boots and button That's Chris, son of my car, to get feet kicked up on Odyless Blowing J's, listen to OJ's in Parliament Stay out my way to AK Lee, kid, follow this I got the hood saying I got the trap saying All my enemies saying Somebody help me now
I be in these streets, moving the D to keep this paper popping The trap jumping, I post up, and I show stopping Two bitches, door locked, I'm for sure knocking Twenty-eight run flats, and they for sure shocking Real pimp, keep a bitch in high heels and stockings Dicks shit walking the strip with their hands out like a zombie I'm riding candy paint, my car doors is kamikazes Cameras in the lights, and plate that's digital fiber objects Hit me 'cause my life is straight, I slice the pie, I cut the cake Life is like a title fight on the scale after I cut the weight Fuck what a nigga feel, if I feel that nigga fake Put a stack in your hand, and put a buck fifty on a nigga's face Try to run, and I give chase, I set sights with my C And you know that I shoot straight, and your nigga ain't gonna miss You gonna feel me like a toothpick Face gonna swell up, and your body gets dipped like a bitch hair When it's chilled up I dare a nigga to say something, and I swear that I'll spray something Nigga, I ain't lying, boy, I fly just like I'm base jumping Your rest hating for hoes, always trying to save something So understand it when a bitch try to explain something Me, I don't say nothing, I don't tolerate a bitch She outta pocket, there's two options, open hand or a fist You a man, or you a bitch You gonna stand, or you gonna sit Bitch, shut the fuck up, 'cause you look like you gonna snitch See me? I'm the stand-up type, I don't say shit after the first line Though, random rocks, you got to rock to remain silent Never find your ass to snitch, I'ma grab the pistol, I'ma turn around I'ma whip both of your eyelids, I'll look what I did I swear to God, if I catch my charge, I'm going down to do my bid I'm in these streets, motherfuckers Drop with the OG, motherfuckers You in these streets, we in these streets, what's up? I'm in these streets, you in these streets, we in these streets, what's up? I'm in these streets, you in these streets, we in these streets, what's up? We in these streets, what's up? We in these streets, what's up? I'm in these streets, you in these streets, we in these streets, what's up? I'm in these streets, you in these streets, we in these streets, what's up? I'm in these streets, you in these streets, we in these streets, what's up? We in these streets, what's up? We in these streets, what's up? Welcome to the midnight late show Ha ha ha, be dickin' good We bout to give you this motherfuckin' shit that's gonna be good You tell everybody that you know you listen to this radio station It's ninety-four point six on your dial We recommended by Seagulls and Tangerine, all the G's in the world Come on!
Grind, stack, hustle, flip My passion all the way, and I'ma try to get my tip I'ma grind, stack, hustle, flip My passion all the way, and I'ma try to get my tip But I'ma grind with you, by the way, nigga Hustle, flip My passion all the way, and I'ma try to get my tip I'ma grind, stack, hustle, flip I said my passion all the way, and I'ma try to get my tip You hate to it like me, boy These niggas are decoys, higher than a satellite Watch how my niggas D-Boy I'm chasing my dreams, boy, watching you niggas scheme, boy Feel me, nigga, or fill the round for my team, boy All about my cream, boy, the one and only B-Nom Think you seeing me in this life, better dream on Soul calm strap, keep army guns, there's a recon Laying in the tally with a sad Puerto Rican
I'm riding, I'm giving it, catch me, and I'm flipping it See me in my city, you still see me, and I'm getting it Stay a mouth high, yeah, you know I love to stay high With that grip, that four-five, yeah, yours do or die Catch me in the hood, and you know it's all good When I'm in the club, no love for the scrubs, throwing up them dead We rubbing on them cunts, trying to fuck what's up They recognizing do or die, and they wanna grill
Grind, stack, hustle, flip My passion all the way, and I'ma try to get my tip I'ma grind, stack, hustle, flip I said my passion all the way, and I'ma try to get my tip But I'ma grind, stack, hustle, flip I said my passion all the way, and I'ma try to get my tip I'ma grind, stack, hustle, flip I said my passion all the way, and I'ma try to get my tip I said my Lickin' in the trap, it's tatted on my back Sure know the way we at, my bro six-five got that peck I see she working at the door, sipping all the things that know Sipping all the things that know I'm grinding I'm stacking on the motherfucking fuck I say I hustle for show keep flipping out the dope Staying on the low cuz I'm for fucking cut throat These bitches will know that I will just roll I'm trapping I'm living checking out the door I'm on the A
Plus I packing them cookies wrapped them past Five oh ones on looking soldier mad Dope boy swag check them swag at the door Do this for my nigga swag swag on on your hoe Trap a lot is what it is six five gonna let you know Six five have the biz good walk get more Six five hit your bitch have her on the tip it toe Trapping is my life so you know I gotta go
Yo I live here and I do this shit right here by myself Top bottle I'm G-loke so I stay on my top shelf Yo niggas don't know me ride around while I'm smoking Chilling yeah I'm loken trapping out in the low key Chilling on the CBOs these police wanna fuck with me Say goddamn even long cuz I do this shit for free You don't really know me Say I'm here by my damn self in the cool lead a sleep snow I guarantee they know me they own it I might fuck up but guess what yeah I get it I go hard like Kobe and Jordan I'm on my pivot I stand tall like Kobe boy I do the shit that I'm the realest I show these niggas I get it pack a twenty serving on the geekies Geekies comes for the twenties knocking on the back door What the fuck you doing this no perfume it's a trap hoe What the fuck your thugs was bring my uncle cook loaf Go hard I'ma make a million I guarantee that I won't choke and I do it
Six years and my nigga out
And I do it
You gonna think it's gonna be about revenge Yeah you know it nigga living in the heart of the scene If you want me come and get me
DJ Kid Magic Rock in the building J-Rock in the building Chaos and my man Casper And these are artists that normally wouldn't work together But we bridging the gap
CJD what up man?
Letting you know that C.O. artists can make hits when we bridge the gap
Motherfuckers thinking I'm foolish Do you fools know the difference between doing what you say and saying what you do? I don't think you have a clue That talking shit gets abused until I send them goons on you pussy niggas Been through some shit I'm tired of pussies trying to push me nigga I try to cool it They won't be satisfied until I'm knocking off their goofy Fake gangsters but it should be ashamed of the lifestyle they living Bum niggas don't get it I'm headed to the story nigga like it was written J-Rock hard body don't forget it Niggas ignorant and ignorance bliss that's why when I shit on them Them niggas be pissed you fucking with the wrong flow These niggas is kids our lil' man son you catch your fists to your ribs Shit I try to tell them what my identity is Everything A1 no sympathy here It's no sympathy here I try to tell them Them niggas is here stay focused on real shit bullshit to the rear I try to tell them it's no sympathy here It's no sympathy here I try to tell them Try to tell them them niggas is here Stay focused on real shit bullshit to the rear I try to tell them it's no sympathy here
Mama said we gonna make a doctor in the city And through the process I'm taking order dinner with me I only spit it cuz I live in fake niggas kill me I know a lotta you dying over that pretty penny Yeah people said I'm never gonna hit the stage Mainly because I started that family at an early age Mainly because she backed me out through all of my crazy ways Anyway who am I to listen to niggas nowadays? Yeah cuz my mind on that bright light My future is coming I just pray I caught the right flight I vision my son playing gripping a kite tight But only a father would know that he deserved a limelight
Stem delighted elevate the mind watch the salt dance They know my speed no accept it Satan took God's hand Then hurry up Matt direct some support notes and let fellas have it Trying to quadruple my salary gas like NASA From with the things I walk right past you come back asking for loot Like you fucking bastards and so it's crucial punch you a fatho Don't give money you ain't nothing they say nigga move smooth to the groove That's the magic way Why your glamour collect that's you claim that click clack espresso Who niggas dying hey I size you up in your own jungle I'm not lying quit playing I understand For the brothers slacking holding clips Cuz I ain't knocking and do what you do to live and shit I'll just be praying for you and your hoe can glom a red Then write only the real ride with me on some real shit Cuz life is k- that's till you die that's why brothers get high nigga
At this time I wanted to thank everyone for checking out the Magic Hour And we gonna keep it moving and we gonna be doing this every week So if you got something that you want us to play and it's dope Send it to me djkidmagicrock@gmail Or you can hit me on Instagram @kidmagicrock And be looking for us next week Shoutouts to Brother High Tim cuz it wouldn't be possible without him And uh everyone in Columbus that represents that good music Keep doing what you do peace